I'd like to call this study, special study session to order. Now I'll turn the diversity of energy to Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This subject, or at least the information on this subject goes back several months. There were a lot of questions, I think, that the council had been interested in, as well as information from the community, or questions from the community. At that time, I kind of shared with the council we wanted to find an authority that we feel we could bring in to help to better address and answer some of those areas that we felt you had opportunities and where you frankly didn't. Fortunately, with the recent merger of our city attorney's firm with Jones' mayor, we did find somebody who's had a lot of experience with that within the firm, and that is Scott Porter, who will be giving that presentation. And there were a couple of things that have prompted that, or some developments, I would say, over the last several months that have occurred. The first is the FCC has provided some further decision on what, if anything, local jurisdictions have the ability to do, which frankly isn't much more, but certainly there's been some clarification in that regard. The firm that we had engaged, XG, to kind of process our applications regarding 5G and wireless, they notified us last month that they were going to be expiring their contracts, so we need to revisit what our process will be, so this will help to at least give guidance to that. And then third, we've had some interest expressed from carriers that they want to start looking at and asking about what our process is regarding wireless. So we are certainly going to have to start addressing some of that. So we felt the first step was to bring back this information, the study session, and for the clarification of the viewing audience, as well as those here, there is no action that the council is going to be taking tonight. This is simply a matter of gathering information. You can certainly get further direction from here, but this is just about giving you the opportunity to understand better as far as the staff level, some of the things that we've come to understand. So with that, I will go ahead and maybe turn it back over to you, and then Mr. Porter can get up and give his presentation.
Thank you. As our city manager said, we are here gathering information. It's a study session for everybody to gain information, and there's going to be some time set aside afterwards for comments that you're welcome to make. So with that, we'll get started with Mr. Porter. Thank you for being here, first of all.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here. I feel excited. Apparently, I am the first Jones' mayor attorney to come visit you, other than Mr. Kress, so on behalf of the firm, hello. So today, I'm going to speak for maybe fifteen minutes about wireless siting and what authority we do and do not have. And I should say, I've been practicing municipal law for roughly twenty years, and during that time period, I've seen an ever-increasing erosion of municipal power to regulate wireless facilities, and that has continued unabated. So what I will be talking about as this proceeds, I'm going to be talking about three different things. First of all, what's happening in the real world? What is, do we expect in the next few years relating to 5G? Second of all, what is the legal framework? What authority do we have? And then third would be practical considerations, items that you, as a city council, may consider as part of your options. So the first thing is, we know that the next step in the evolution will be to 5G, fifth-generation technology. It's not happening yet. Yes, I realize AT&amp;T is telling the world that they have 5G, but that is not true. They're marketing it as 5G, but the reality is, it's just 4G that they're calling 5G. We can get into the technicalities and specifics, but it may be a few years yet until you see an actual deployment and 5G turning on. Yes, so I should say, in a number of cities, our firm represents a number of cities, as of yet, I have not seen any actual 5G request to install facilities, other than at most, I've heard discussion about maybe sometime in the future soon, we would like to install some infrastructure that would allow both 4G and 5G, but as of yet, not happening. So in short version, it's going to be a few years. Yes, there are test markets throughout little communities in America, but the reality is, wide scale, it's going to be a number of years. Might be two, might be five, I don't know. So a typical small, so part of this technology, so the main benefit from the telecom providers' C of 5G technology is essentially that it's faster. So roughly speaking, ten times faster, sometimes five, sometimes twenty, but you understand the idea, substantially faster. And the way that this occurs is different than current technology. Right now, the problem that you have is not that you're unable to get phone calls. That everywhere, in almost every major location throughout America, you can receive a telephone call. Yes, just like there is a road in every major location throughout America. But the question is, how wide of a road is it? Is there too much traffic for the roads to handle? And at certain peak hours, telecom providers say, oh my gosh, we need an eight-lane freeway, and we only have a two-lane road. It doesn't necessarily speed the traffic, but it's just they have so much traffic, it ends up work, the system needs to work for everything, for all the traffic to get through. So the way that telecom providers are proposing to solve this conundrum is by installing 5G technology, or I shouldn't, it's not even necessarily 5G, small cell technology, it could be 4G. And instead of having one large-scale macro cell, which you might see in the bottom of the screen, where a typical macro cell of an antenna might be forty-five feet tall, might have a forty-watt radio, forty-watt radio transmission with a thousand meters radius, so roughly half a mile radius, so it could be a mile across. Instead, what is being proposed is a typical small-cell antenna would be twenty-five feet with five-watt radio coverage of only a hundred and sixty meters, translation five-hundred feet radius. So it might be a thousand feet apart for the diameter. Now, yes, can they cover more territory than that? Yes, but as a general rule, that's what they aim to do, because they want a little bit of overlap, because as you can imagine, not, if you line up all the circles on a map, if you're trying to cover everywhere in the city, you need some of those circles to overlap some, otherwise you're going to have spots that you're not covering. So they designed them for roughly speaking five-hundred-foot radius, but from there, then, you know, plus or minus, depending on geography, how high the pole is, how tall buildings are in the way, are there lots of trees in the way? There's a number of factors that can go into how far they actually transmit, but a good rule of thumb is roughly five-hundred feet radius or a thousand feet distance diameter. And as I'm presenting, if there are questions, feel free to jump in. So what do these look like? These are typical installments. So you can see on the left, it's disguised to look like a typical light, but you can see where the antenna is at the very top of the structure. And then on the picture on the left, you would see the radio equipment would be installed within the pole itself. An alternative would be, what you can see on the right, is another alternative where the radio infrastructure is attached at the ground, and it's disguised to be as a light pole with the antenna on top. With the design on the left, it's almost identical to any streetlight pole. The main difference in that design is just, it's just a little bit taller. So here are some other examples with the antenna and the radio. You can, they have a lot of ability to change where on the pole the radio infrastructure actually is. Here's a more typical example, something like that on the left. I believe that this is consistent, I haven't confirmed with staff. Would what is on the left generally be consistent with our current design?
Yes.
Okay. So our current policy would be encouraging something to look like what's on the left. And then on the right is a similar design. So as you can see, it's hard to tell, if you didn't know what you were looking for, you would just think it was a streetlight pole. Other types of deployment that is far less frequent, but does occur, is what is called a strand-mounted small cell. And the pole that's on the far left, that's maybe a couple of feet tall, that's the antenna. And those would be attached to existing wires in the community to, say, for example, an Edison line, and they would attach it to that one. And there, so here are, Laverne already has a preferred small-cell design, and this is straight out of your policy. So this is what we're encouraging currently through the policy, and you can see the picture on the right, and if you have questions about specifics, staff can certainly provide answers to those questions. And then Edison likewise has its standard design. So if Edison says, if you are a telecom provider and you want to install on their facility, well, there are certain pre-approved designs, and it needs to look like this, because this is our equipment, and this is what it needs to look like. And they're fairly similar to what Laverne's design is on. So on the right shows you, that's an omnidirectional antenna that looks like the baton, so that's for all directions, whereas what's on the right is a unidirectional antenna. So sometimes when providers will install a facility, sometimes what you'll see is, you'll have two different facilities that are quite necked close to each other, and there's concern in the community saying, I'm getting a double dose of radiation when the opposite is true, that you're getting the same amount of emissions, because instead they just have two antennas that are facing opposite directions, rather than having all of it on one antenna facing multiple directions. So it's a difficult question to say, it's not necessarily the number of facilities, it's rather, it's based on the type of facility and how it's designed. So legal framework. I said that cities are losing their ability to regulate. In 1996, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 was adopted, and that essentially said that federal law controls with respect to radio frequency emissions, period, end of story. So if a city wants to establish its own regulations about whether a particular facility is dangerous or not, we cannot do that. And the logic behind that is, then you can imagine how difficult it would be to, if you were Sprint or Verizon or AT&amp;T, if every single city that you went to had its own standards for what was and what was not legal as far as the type of equipment that you're allowed to install, you would have ten thousand different standards, and it would be very difficult for them to deploy. Instead, the idea is that there is one overarching set of rules. If you comply with the federal RF emission requirements, then a city cannot do more. What we can do is, we can ensure that they are in fact complying with those guidelines. So we can require testing immediately after construction. That's a pretty common requirement. I shouldn't say, it's increasingly common, let's put it that way. So another rule is that, this has been the law since 1996, is that a city cannot quote "effectively prohibit" the deployment of infrastructure. Here's the exact rule. A city may, the regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless services, in other words, wireless facilities by any state or local government shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. So if we adopted a rule that said, no cellphone towers within a thousand feet of a school, that would be illegal. Why? Because there's schools throughout, actually, let me come up with a more egregious answer. Example, a thousand feet from any house. Well, we have houses throughout the city. And if we had such a rule, then we would effectively be saying, you can never come into our city. Now, some cities get around this, and they say, okay, well, the rule is a thousand feet. But then we have an exception that says, well, if for some reason that would violate federal law, then it is allowed. In other words, they're not regulating anything, because it will always be violating federal law if you have some standard such as that, because effectively, you could never deploy anything that isn't within at least a thousand feet of a house. So now, of course, then it becomes a gray area and judgment calls and all this sort of thing. At what point have you effectively prohibited something? So the answer is, we must allow deployments of wireless infrastructure. The question is, at what point, how can we regulate it and encourage it to go to the places that we want, and in the manner that we want, rather than in the places that we really don't want, and in the manners we really don't want. The standard for effective prohibition recently changed. In 2018, the FCC issued a new decision, a small-cell decision, which became effective, well, became effective in November of 2018. It became entirely effective in April fourteenth, 2019, a day that will live in infamy. That's my lame attempt at joke. So at any rate, one of the things that it did was that it changed the standard for what constitutes an effective prohibition. And now the standard, instead of being the significant gap test, which was something that telecom providers did not like, they changed it to the material limits test, a test that telecom providers do like. So now the test is whether it materially limits or inhibits the ability of any competitor or potential competitor to compete in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment. So if our regulations go so far as to essentially go to five, if we have materially limited their ability to compete in a fair environment, then that is clearly a violation of federal law. So additionally, we must act within a reasonable period of time. This has always been the law, since 1996, that a city needs to act in a reasonable amount of time. However, starting in 2000, and most recent, and again in 2014, and then again in 2018, the FCC has established more precise rules about what constitutes a reasonable period of time. The most, so there are what are called shot clocks. A city must approve certain types of applications within certain amounts of time. It might be sixty days, that's a short timeframe. It might be ninety days, it might be a hundred fifty days, depending on the type of facility. If it's a quote "small-cell facility" as defined by the FCC, the city must, number one, well, we'll get to it in a bit, but must act on the application within sixty or ninety days, depending on the type of application. And that is inclusive of issuing building permits, getting the encroachment permit, every type of view, not just speaking to the planning department, has to be from complete, from application till completion. So here are the, as you can see, there are various FCC decisions, 2009, we'll talk about each one. So there are deemed granted remedies if we don't act within certain amounts of time. So if the city decides to adopt an ordinance, you need to make sure that on one hand, we want the ability to allow appeals, because quite often that's, there are benefits to allowing appeals if people are aggrieved or what have you. But at the same time, if you don't act within the timeframes, it's possible that there will be a deemed grant, granted remedy. In other words, it's approved automatically, which is the opposite. So quite often, what ends up happening is people that are opposed to a particular facility appeal, requesting the city take action on it because they really don't want it. But those same people also want a really long timeframe in which to appeal, which is actually the opposite of what opponents should be arguing for. They want a short appeal period, because otherwise, projects will be automatically approved, regardless of whether they're good or bad. So it's a fine, it's a narrow path that we have to tread if we're going to be regulating and regulating in a manner that is both good for the, that's good for the public. So RF emissions, we've already talked about, a city cannot regulate RF emissions based, but we can, the FCC said we cannot regulate the ongoing operation of facilities. Cities can adopt regulations to ensure compliance with federal requirements. For example, upon completion of construction, the city could require testing to confirm RF compliance of the new facility, saying, you really did comply with federal law like you promised you were going to. So right-of-way. A telephone corporation, essentially Verizon, Crown Castle, may use the ground of the right-of-way for free without paying annual rent. Now, if they install their infrastructure on our property of the right-of-way, such as poles that we own, and we own, what, eighty-plus percent of the poles in the city? If they install on our equipment, then we could charge annual rent. Now, the FCC has said, they've limited how much we can charge as far as rent. We'll see whether that stands the test of time. There's currently a legal challenge in that regard, but we'll see. So we cannot charge rent, but we can charge the rent of poles or whatever equipment we have in the right-of-way. Or frankly, if we charge too much money, then they're going to say, well, we're just going to install a pole in your right-of-way, and we're not going to pay you rent. So if we charge too much, they'll just go somewhere else. So we have to, so the bar is low as far as what we can charge. It's just market economics. It's hard to charge, it's hard to compete with free. Cities may regulate facilities in the right-of-way in two ways. As landlord, so we can require the issue of some encroachment permit, which is our current policy, because then we say, you cannot install anything in our right-of-way unless you have an encroachment permit from the city. But additionally, as a regulator, we can use our zoning powers to say, this is what it's allowed to look like, you can't be taller than this, it can't, it needs to be this far away from other facilities. You could have various permitting processes. The FCC has said that it is required that for small-cell facilities, you have a ministerial process, which does not mean that we cannot also have a discretionary process. But ministerial meaning, this category of facilities must be approved, period, end of story, no choice, compared to a discretionary process, which is whoever the decision-maker is, takes various things into account, and two reasonable people can disagree as to whether it should be approved, and then whoever is making that decision makes the decision. So I talked about this quickly, so in 2018, there was the FCC decision. The main points of that were, number one, is we need to have a ministerial process for small cells. Number two, to establish the shot clock of sixty or ninety days. It established the materially inhibit standard, and it limited the amount of fees that we're allowed to charge. What it did say is, it didn't make a flat prohibition on charging more than a hundred dollars per application. But what it did say was, it's a safe harbor. If you charge only a hundred dollars per application, we know for sure that that is reasonable. But if you go above that, then it's probably, maybe starting to look like it's unreasonable. So that is an incredibly low number. So that is being challenged in court. It's currently before the Ninth Circuit. It's the only, it's the single case in America that is discussing this matter, because everything was handled there. We'll see what ends up happening. It's been briefed, I don't recall the current status of it, the last, I believe it's been briefed and not yet been argued. So at any rate, it'll be a number of months yet. And it's currently subject to challenge within the Ninth Circuit, which is the California Circuit, among others. So Laverne has designed standards. The development review policy considered the small-cell designs policy, standards policy, and then on April tenth, 2019, prior to the effective date of the FCC decision, just under the wire by four days, the Planning Commission adopted the policy to establish, so this is your current policy. It has a locational preference hierarchy, saying, we would prefer that they be in parts of town that are not so bad compared to the parts of town that we really want to preserve. So it has a hierarchy saying, the most preferred locations are co-locating, and then less preferred would be in the right-of-way in public land in non-residential areas compared to the right-of-way in public land in residential areas, compared to utility or jointly owned distribution poles, compared to new infrastructure in the right-of-way. You don't want to have new poles cluttering up the streets, that's the idea. And then there are design guidelines, and then it has preferred pole designs. We prefer that the pole look like this rather than looking like that. So currently, we've been, the city's been acting under a policy as opposed to, as opposed to an ordinance. I say that there's two grounds that we have to enforce our rules. Policies, which are internal procedures as landlord, but also, and we've been interpreting our code based on those policies, or we can have an ordinance that expressly states what has been longstanding practice. So if you wanted to adopt an ordinance, then we would, number one, FCC would require some sort of a ministerial process for small cells. And that's a defined term, it's actually technically a small wireless facility. So the ministerial process could be designed to incentivize favored locations and to reduce the staff time to comply with federal rules. The idea, and then also making it more difficult for those designs that we don't like. So my, so that's, so what you want to think about is the example that I gave of, imagine if we had a flat rule that said, no wireless facilities anywhere in town, otherwise it becomes discretionary. Well, we all know that that would be an effective prohibition, so therefore, everything would become discretionary, and therefore, you would not be incentivizing everything. Everything would be going through this laborious process. So typically, what cities like to do is they'll establish a ministerial process consistent with FCC requirements, to say, we'll make these easier so that if, we'll encourage you to do these, rather than these, and they're going to make that process difficult. And if that process is difficult, then people, then providers will be far less likely to propose the things that are difficult. They'll do the things that are easy that we can't do. The discretionary process could also be designed to allow ad hoc determinations, but then we already talked about the appeal times. You would need to make sure that there was a short appeal time to not violate federal FCC rules. And also, one of the benefits of a ministerial process is, because it's pre-designed, and then you can ensure compliance with those short shot clocks. The ordinance could, if you have an ordinance that would allow additional enforcement options, and you could flesh out processing procedures, saying, for your application to be complete, here is everything that is required. And then you could establish comprehensive application requirements for whatever it is that you think is important. A lot of cities believe that protecting relating to RF emissions is important, so they'll establish enough procedures relating to that. Your ordinance could also lay out a hierarchy of designs, hierarchy of locations, essentially, the things that your policy already does, we would just flesh it out. And then, so there's my comic strip that I like. It says, at least they no longer look like cellphone towers. So you can demand that they look like what you want them to look like. If you want them to look like carrots, you can, or you can go with your standard designs, which is probably more typical. Are there questions?
My inhibiting, the distance that you have, thank you. The distance that these radio waves travel, for instance, if you wanted to block one side of it to keep it from, say, entering into a school ground, would you be able to do that?
So, so there are a few things. Number one is, as you're aware, we're not allowed to regulate based on the environmental effects of the facility. So we cannot say, oh, we think that's dangerous. What we can do is, it's clear that we can regulate how they appear, and we can mandate that they comply with federal requirements. So whatever those federal requirements are, we hold on to that.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. The existing technology on our cell towers is a forty-watt half-modal radius.
In a typical example, that's true.
And then, when you have your cellphone, you just hope it reaches up to the height that, wherever that reaches, so you can connect. And then the new, newer is, is five watts with a range of five hundred yards. Or is it five hundred feet?
Five hundred feet.
Okay. So one of the things you said was co-locating, I think, was a term you, does that mean that you put them back-to-back, where one goes this way and one goes this way, or hundred and eighty degrees?
I almost regret pointing that out, because that is the rare instance. That is ninety-nine percent of the time that doesn't happen. Of course, the things that spark my interest are the things that are different. So a typical example would, if a small-cell facility is going to be installed, typical facility might be, essentially, you put in, along the street, for example, they were supposed to put in a new light pole with the antennas on top, and it would look just like any other light pole unless somebody has a really discerning eye. And I've, I've been doing And I've, I've been doing wireless matters for a long time and I quiz my children on this and even they have a difficult time finding the wireless facility. So they kind of know what to look for now and it's no longer much of a game, but still, so as far as the design, so there's what's called the inverse square law. Essentially, the, if you double the distance, if you, if you double the distance, you're decreasing the power fourfold. So if the concern is RF emissions, once you're a few feet away, you, if you're one foot away compared to two feet away, you have the radiation. You're eight feet, four feet away, eight feet away, et cetera. So the, the greatest concern, I mean, obviously, there are a number of members of the public that are concerned about RF emission safety, but frankly, the greatest threat is if you're right up next to a pole compared to you're five or a feet away.
It's my understanding that when you have a cell tower, that usually the antenna is thirty-five, forty, forty-five feet in the air on the cell towers.
Correct.
And then it goes out pretty much on a straight line, that it doesn't radiate to the ground and, and all over. How accurate is that?
Well, it, it's, it does go to the ground, obviously, otherwise your cellphone wouldn't work, right? Because it has to be able to connect to the tower.
Unless you have enough power in your cellphone to get it up to forty feet.
Right. So they, generally speaking, these are closer and they're, they're less powerful. And that's, because they're not as powerful, you, you pack them into, and essentially, then they allow the telecom providers to fill in gaps in their network. This area is the location where we see the most dropped calls. We don't need to have one, another huge facility covering everything again. Those will still be there. They're not going to remove them because they've already got the umbrella coverage, but rather it's now, this is where the hole is, let's fill in that hole. Thank you.
Most of the residents that I've talked to are very concerned about the radio frequency and the safety factor.
Yes.
And also the fact where the antennas are, how you can place them. Sounds like the government is just basically, they're, you know, especially with the, the telecommunications companies who are just taking away all of our rights as a local municipality is what you stated. Now, it looks like you've got a couple of options where you can do the ordinance and you can do some other things that you can make a double step program to where the most important thing is the safety of the residents, whether it be the children or seniors and then all of us in the middle. Of course, I'm a senior, so whatever. But that's the fact. And then also, the, obviously, we have mostly concrete poles, mostly concrete poles in our area that would look like that. It's just the fact that the safety, the wind factor, we don't get a lot of wind, but you know, shear and strength and making sure that, that they support those mechanisms. The biggest thing is the safety factor, where they're populated, whether it be schools, whether it be mobile home communities, or whether, you know, that's the biggest concern. How can we address that to put an ordinance in effect that's, first of all, legal and, and, and then basis of the shot clock also? So not a bunch of factors here, you know? We've got some real concerned citizens. I've read up on it and it, it's a scary proposition. There are some instances where, you know, there, there's something to be concerned about, especially the FCC and regulations and we've got some big concerns.
So what you can do is, you, you can't prohibit them outright. So, but what you can do is, what I was talking about earlier, is you can design your hierarchy to make it substantially more difficult in the locations in town where you really don't want them. And to, and to make it easier in other parts of town. Now, that, that's the trade-off. To make it less appealing somewhere, you have to make it more appealing somewhere else. So the question is, where are you okay making it more appealing? That's, that's the trade-off. Because if you have no preferences, then everything's the same and they're just going to put them wherever they're going to put them. So what a lot of cities will do is they will have a hierarchy and the city already has one, which you may want to tweak or, you know, it's a judgment call about what areas in town would be the best to preserve typically. It's common practice that the most protected areas are single-family residents, neighborhoods, because aesthetically, it's just discordant to have infrastructure based on that. And it makes a lot more sense to have that type of infrastructure in a commercial zone. And to be clear, it's based on aesthetics. We cannot be regulating, we cannot be making our determinations based on, we're concerned about the health of the residents, so therefore we want to have it in a commercial area instead of a residential area. But clearly, we can do it based on aesthetic reasons and it truly needs to be based on aesthetic reasons. It can't be, ah, shucks, you know, this is for aesthetics. No, because courts see right through that. So there have been a number of cases where members of the public would say things like, oh, it's based on property values. Well, what they really meant is the perceived health effects of RF emissions leads to might decrease property values. So courts have said that that is not a basis. What you can regulate is based on aesthetics and it's completely reasonable to say, certain types of infrastructure make a lot more sense in a right of way in a major thoroughfare rather than in a single-family neighborhood. Absolutely.
Well, that's the thing. My biggest thing is the fact that, I'm not against technology at all because we're all based on technology. I mean, we do things now that we never could do before ten years ago and fifteen years ago, I used a typewriter. Well, that's like, that's gone, you know? But the safety of residents is my biggest concern, working with an ordinance that works with our cities, so.
Scott, you know, when you're talking about hierarchy, I mean, I'm a cellphone company. I'm not coming in and saying, well, the problem of Laverne is the far-flung residences that want to connect. And that's, that's where we need our signal boost. There may be some industrial areas where these things might be prettier, but if they had a range of five hundred feet, that doesn't seem like it's going to work.
And that's correct. And that's why we can't have an ordinance that flat out prohibits them. Because remember, the overarching rule is we cannot effectively prohibit the deployment of these services. Now, we can encourage them to go other places, we can make their life more difficult, but we cannot effectively have prohibited them from providing service. So what we can do is we can figure out ways to work within that. So you don't want to have a heart and fast, over my dead body, never, ever will we ever allow these in X zone. But you can say, but every other zone, put it there first. And if everything else fails, okay, fine. That's the best we can do. Any other questions?
Well, so to clarify, in the end, the, looking at the residential zones, if that is in fact, because that's where our topography challenges exist. We've got better line of sight and a lot of our commercial area into the whole town, but where we have the foothills and a lot of that area is in the residential. So likely, if there's one, the application is considered, even if we pave this path that really makes it easy. You're saying that we still have to leave that door open if they say, this is where our coverage issues are, like Bob was saying. We have to leave a path to that even if it's got a lot of challenges.
Correct. We, we leave a path and we encourage them to go somewhere else. Hopefully, they take a different path. But we have to allow a path.
And, and that path is fairly shallow in the sense that while you were saying that we could entice them with lower fees in certain areas, the ceiling's still going to be a hundred bucks.
Well, it, it.
It's a hundred bucks a, a facility at the most expensive places and then we just have to reduce it from a hundred to something that was attractive to, to draw them to where we want them to be.
So there may be some opportunity to provide incentives financially, but I don't think that that's going to be a major driver because, like you said, it's such a small dollar value. And presumably, I would expect that our fees frankly will be more than a hundred dollars because we're allowed to charge our actual reasonable costs. And so then the FCC presumes that if it's more than a hundred dollars, it's unreasonable for the application fees, which is different than rent.
Correct.
Application processing fees. But for rent, again, they have very low numbers in the offhand. I want to say it's two hundred and seventy dollars per year, I believe is the number. I, I could double check if you care, but.
So rents in the neighborhoods could be higher, it disperses them too, but that's still.
So again.
Still going to compete with their desire for coverage versus.
So dollar incentives will not be much in the way of incentives.
Right. Or discouragement.
Correct.
Either way.
But what is useful, the carrot and stick approach, is you streamline through a ministerial process, staff is legally required to approve designs that look like this in locations that meet the following requirements. Poof, done. And maybe that will save them at least on some of the applications. And then the other applications, which frankly, some will be coming from residential neighborhoods. And no matter what we may want to do, they're going to come.
And even in those, we still apply that sixty or ninety day shot clock.
Correct. So the way to ensure that at least we have some regulation is to have, you know, so you want to have some sort of regulation, otherwise they can just get approved. Well, those, if there may be, in some instances, they would be required, in other instances, there's not. So depends on what's being.
Thank you, Scott. We move now to allow the public to make comments. The study session is going to be an hour long. So can I see a show of hands who's, would like to speak on this? Two? Anybody else? Okay, so.
Three.
Three. Okay, so maybe about six minutes apiece if, if you can. And then, so if you can come to the podium. And I saw your hand up first, sir, so why don't you comment up then?
Mr. Mayor, if I could point out, since we are webcasting, we only have one mic that kind of works in that area, so we will be allowing comment if there are any questions after we're done with all the public comments and we have time. We'll certainly ask staff to answer, otherwise it's just taking input for you at this moment.
Great. Thank you. So one of my concerns. Your name, sir? Pat Weedoff. Pat. There was supposed to be a meeting on January eighth about a particular cellphone, right? Tower, cellphone tower. And it was canceled. It was online, it was, it told the name of the company.
There was, it was, there was a planning commission that had a hearing and it was approved. And then it's my understanding that the cell tower company withdrew their application.
Oh, okay, okay. So along with that, when I got that information, the city, the new cell tower was going to be put in the sports park. That's right? Okay. So that's off the table now.
Yes, the school district pulled their application.
Oh, super. Okay, that's why, that's the main reason why I came, because I live by there, worried about that. So the only other thing I want to echo is this gentleman's comments about health. And I know there's a lot of misinformation out there and I actually did some research today. I want you guys to take this peer-reviewed research and maybe sometime read it and see what the actual health benefits are, health hazards are. I know I came in here earlier and one gentleman said I was wasting my time on this, but I still feel better and I'll sleep better if I know I gave that to you and you'll at least look at it and, and read it and see. Most of the research that says there's no problems come from companies in the United States and only deal with the heat that's coming from the radiation. But Europe, India, Saudi Arabia, they're coming up with a lot better research on humans on the long-term effects of these radiations. And this article here, the first part's a little dry, it's more scientific, but after you get into what really happened to the studies, you'll get an idea of what's going on. So I just want to echo the gentleman's fault, I have thoughts on health hazards and that I would hope the job of the city council would be to help, take health, take care of the health of its members of the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
It seems like the gentleman making the presentation just blew us off on the safety of the park. That is my big concern. There's, rather than us having to prove it's not safe, I think the companies have to prove that it is safe.
Well said. Thank you. Good.
I thank you guys for this day today. Can everyone hear me?
No.
Speak up a little, please.
I don't think the mic is on.
Yeah.
Hello? Can you hear me? Uh-uh. First of all, I wanted to say, 5G is not for self-service. 5G is not for voice calls. We already have that. 5G is for the Internet of Things, smart cities, self-driving cars, artificial intelligence, all of that. We don't need that so bad to risk our health for. And 5G is not like 4G. 5G is beamforming. It is a middle millimeter wave technology that is used by the Department of Defense for active denial system. That is a military-grade weapon. So here's, in nineteen ninety-six, President Clinton signed the Telecommunication Act into law. When these guidelines were developed, the cellphone was the size of a brick and only for voice calls. The times have changed, but the laws have not. Section seven oh four of the Telecommunication Act states, no health or environmental concern could interfere with the placement of telecom equipment. This is how our rights were taken away by the wireless industry. What the legislation does, does is give the power to regulate wireless technologies to the FCC. The FCC is a spectrum auctioning agency. It is not a health agency. They don't even have one biomedical person on their team. It is important for people to know that the FCC is dominated by the telecommunications industry. There is a revolving door between the industry and the regulators, like the fox guarding the hen house. Section seven oh four took the power from the local governments to regulate the location of cell towers based on health. That means that if we won't, if they want to put a cell tower in front of our house, we can't say we don't want it. We can't say, I'm worried because of negative health risks. We can't come here to you guys and, because if you deny it based on the health, the city will get sued by the wireless industry. However, we are here because of the health concerns. We're not here for any other reason but the health concerns. And there are, with the RF radiation beamforming at us twenty-four seven, we are all aware of the negative health effects and if you are not, there's plenty of medical research out there to prove it. And if, if anybody is interested, you can reach out to me and I'll be more than happy to send you all the information that I have based on the health concerns. So we are here and we are looking at you as our city leaders and we are asking you, what are you going to do for us? How are you going to make sure our community is safe from this technology? What is the best way to put this technology in Laverne? Let's start with municipal code resolution or, and ordinances that will protect us. At least when the wireless companies come in, they don't have a free for all and get to put the cell tower wherever they want. Let's look at fiber optic cable connection. Don't we already have that technology? What happened to those copper landlines that were supposed to be switched over to fiber optic to the home? The truth is that the most efficient way to move data from point A to point B is by fiber optic cable. The internet connection will be safer, better, and most importantly, no health risks are associated with fiber optic cable. If we truly cannot approach this technology with fiber optic cable, we need to have an outside contractor who is not industry motivated to show substantial evidence that there is, that proves that there is a significant gap in coverage. The significant gap in coverage must be only for voice calls. If residents can currently make a call where the antennas are proposed, then there is no gap. Once a significant gap in coverage is proven, then the wireless company looks and puts the antenna in the areas that are not prohibited by our local laws and resolutions. On October first, two thousand and nineteen, the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals ruled in case eighteen dash one oh five one, the ruling means that FCC no longer regulates the internet, webpages, video, music, streaming, online gaming, and other information services. Therefore, big wireless has no preemption to install or operate personal wireless facilities that emit wireless information services. Transmissions in any municipality in the United States. This also means that the wireless industry only has preemptions to place, construct, and modify personal wireless facilities for wireless transmitting telecomm- modify personal wireless facilities for wireless transmitting telecommunications services, voice transmissions. A proven lack of significant gap in voice transmission coverage is a very important factor in whether or not to sign an unnecessary accommodation agreement. Because residents can currently make calls where the antennas are proposed. Then, they can move forward with the least intrusive means. Least intrusive means is the wireless site location and design that most closely conforms to the local values and still fills in the significant gap in coverage. The National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, requires an analysis of environmental impacts of major federal actions. Anyone wishing to construct a facility that uses an FCC license must submit an environmental assessment to the FCC or certification that the facility is categorically excluded. Here is a fact sheet, I have a fact sheet here for you from the FCC regarding the NEPA. On January 17, the e-regulators appeared before the U.S. Indian Court in Washington, D.C., to argue the FCC has facilitated one of the biggest accounting scandals in American history. This is important because this case could result in reconstructing the telecom industry and reshaping the current push for 4G, 5G densification in neighborhoods across the United States. Public right-of-way contracts should be conditional and terminate if litigation results in terminating new FCC rules. Wireless facility contracts should set two bars, one for FCC rules and one if FCC rules do not exist.
Susan, are you getting close to being completed?
Yes. Now, I have a couple of questions, but I can't. I wanted to know, what's the reason the city purchased the light poles from Edison? Is the mic still on? Can you hear me?
This one?
No, why not? What's the reason the city purchased light poles from Edison? The liability is huge for the city to allow a private antenna on their private, on their property. You should never allow a private antenna to be installed on public property. Also, XG Communities, they pulled out from the contract with the city, so does that mean we are no longer in contract with them? We don't have anybody marketing our city for, that's good. One last thing. Do we have an application for our city that we use for these carriers to apply, or do they just send an email saying, we want to put a cell tower in the city? And that's it?
We'll try to answer your questions, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Kids are well-behaved, Susan. Nice job. Okay, so, if we could answer questions that Laura asked.
The microphone's going to move back. I'll ask some of the questions that are probably more appropriate for me and then I'll throw it back over to you. Thank you. As it relates to, probably the last four questions that are more appropriate for me, as it relates to the reason for the light poles, we started pursuing that more than six years ago as an energy efficiency effort, to be able to take ownership of them, to lower the electricity cost by putting them under our responsibility over being with Edison and then also converting to LED. This opportunity or the whole 5G piece just kind of came into place while that process was going on, wasn't even contemplated as part of the reason. XG, as I mentioned, yes, in the beginning, that contract has been expired by XG. At this point, we do not have an application process because they were supposed to be our conduit for processing applications. So, one of the things we need to do is decide what process is it that we want to do should we get the request for an application, because that shot clock is limited. And we have had that inquiry, not an application, we have no application, so that at this point, but it was what prompted the need for this study session to get some general direction on how we should move forward. The current policy does take into account a lot of the opportunities or abilities we have to restrict, but nonetheless, we wanted to also get input should we be pursuing an ordinance that kind of mirrors a lot of that, but puts a lot more T in it. For that, I will throw it over and ask to respond to a lot of the questions that Ms. Morales had regarding court rulings, fiber optics, the gap in coverage being applicable on the voice. Scott, if you could?
So, as far as the gap, the significant gaps, I think I am a lot of, just hover very closely. So, the, so, until the FCC decision, the test was, step number one, is there a significant gap in coverage? And if so, and they're proposing to fill that significant gap, step number two is they need to show the least intrusive means, that what they're proposing to do is the least intrusive means of filling that gap. That is no longer the test. The test is now, what I discussed in your presentation, the test is whether we're materially prohibiting the deployment of these services. So, although it's certainly beneficial to understand the background, I was trying to not talk about the significant gap test. And she's absolutely correct that, right now, telecom providers are not, they don't have what I would consider to be a significant gap in their own coverage in the sense of, yes, you can get telephone coverage, but now, there we go, now we've got data. So, now, it's her, and she's absolutely right. These are, these other services, they're for things other than just voice. But that doesn't mean that our regulation is any different. It's still covered by federal law. And, you know, I come away from these meetings and some members of the public think that I'm the bearer of that, you know, shoot the messenger, you know, I'm just the messenger. This is what the law is, not good or bad, it's the law.
I believe so. And there was a comment made about blowing off the safety concerns that were raised and I want to at least assure them that's not the case. What we're trying to do is, we have, we have to put a process in place. We cannot use safety as a reason to deny these. What I think we're struggling with, I hear a lot of what the community is saying, but that's our concern. Echo that. We just have been told, you don't get the ability to regulate that. And so, we're trying to find, what is that balance, listening to those concerns? And we have to keep it kind of within the aesthetic. It is the primary area that I'm hearing. We have our best opportunity, but not deny it just to design.
Yeah, and you can, when you craft your ordinance, you can just make sure that, frankly, the city will be better protected with an ordinance than you are right now because we can build out some of those RF compliance requirements that we don't have simply by with our current policy.
Okay, anything, anything else, Eric? Why'd you come? Chain batteries.
So, you're saying that we should come up with our own ordinance? That's what I just-
If that's the goal, yes.
And I have suggested in discussions, Scott, that I think the city wants as competent ordinance, retaining as much discretion and jurisdiction as we can without getting ourselves into expensive litigation.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
It's very frustrating. A lot of the laws are coming down for local municipalities like us. They take away our rights as a city to control things. And whether it's state or federal mandate, I think the biggest thing is the safety concern. And I really, as residents of this great United States, that the lobbyists that come in with these telecommunications companies have one thing in mind, and that's flattering their information so they can sell their products, basically, to push information. So, as residents, we need to stand up to make sure that we're being heard, the safety of us.
So, how can we stand up? I haven't heard any way we can stand up.
I, you know, we have a primary election coming. I mean, you have local congressmen, senators that do listen to the local communities. And I think this is a hot button. It's not just here, like as you stated, it's not, the United States are a little quiet on it, but in other parts of the world, it's a big issue. It's a very big issue. And that concerns me. But I think, you know, one person, two people, three people, you need to talk to your local congressman, senators and say, hey, we have an issue, they're taking away a lot of our rights as our local, you know, communities here. It's important that we stand up.
But aren't they going to listen to city hall, city council before they're going to listen to me?
Well, I don't think you're talking to the wrong people.
How can we be talking to, I live here. How can I, how am I talking to the wrong people? You guys-
Let me explain to you. The state of California imposes their will on city councils.
You gotta stand up.
Excuse me, I'm talking to you and telling you that we can't fight state with all the Democrats that are in power right now. It's a supermajority. They don't even come to us to vote. That's all I'm telling you. We are at the mercy of that government and when it comes to us, we just have to follow whatever it is that they tell us to do.
That sounds like a Trump thing. We're going to follow until we die. Okay, one more thing that I would like to say and then we're going to adjourn the study session, is more and more people are going to cell phones and not having a landline. So, I know that one of the things is safety, but also the health of our residents that call 911. We have to make sure that they have the ability to contact the 911 carriers. So, there's a lot of things that are involved. So, the study session is over. The city council meeting will begin at 6:30. Thank you.